Good evening. Welcome to the Montrose Regular City Council Meeting, Tuesday, November 19th, 2019. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to put Harrison right on the spot right now. He knows how this drill works. And may we have the roll call, please?
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Judy Ann Fyles.
Present.
Doug Glaspo.
Present.
All council members are present.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda, including additions and deletions?
Yes, Mayor Bowman. We are going to postpone honoring the high school boys' golf team to a night when it's more convenient for their schedules, and so we are going to remove item five from our agenda tonight.
Thank you. And call for public comment for non-agenda items. Would anybody like to address council on anything that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing that, I will move to approval of minutes. City Council consideration of the minutes of November 12, 2019, regular city council meeting. And council, what is your wish?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November 12, 2019, regular city council meeting as presented.
I second that.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. And next up, city council consideration of the appointment of Harrison Hall and Catherine Borner to the City of Montrose Youth Council for the 2019-2020 term. Michaela?
All right. Good evening, council. I am excited tonight to bring two more applicants for the youth council before you. I know Catherine had a banquet this evening that ended right at six, so she's going to be over shortly. She should be here, but it looks like Harrison is here if you'd like to come up. So we will follow the same procedure that we have in the past. We'll have each of the applicants draw a question here, state their name, the school that they're in, and their grade, the question, and then go ahead and provide a 30-second to one-minute answer for council. And then, following those interviews, I would recommend appointment of both to the youth city council if city council would like. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Good evening. I'm Harrison Hall, and I'm applying for youth city council, and I will draw one of My question is, in your opinion, what is the greatest challenge facing today's youth? I would say the greatest challenge facing today's youth is teen vaping and drug use. Now, a lot of teens use vaping as a way out for problems, depression, normal teenager stuff. As we've seen in the past few years, popcorn lung and certain diseases has come up from vaping, and is affecting our youth. We've had a couple kids pass away in other states, I know, from the popcorn lung and also vaping. I'd say that's our greatest issue we have with our youth is just trying to get them off of it and trying to get them something with positive and something besides doing drugs and vaping, so.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm going to recommend that we postpone the rest of this item on the agenda until Catherine can be here.
And council, if that's okay with you, if we would go ahead and move her interview later on, that would be perfect.
If that's all right with everybody, we'll go to the next item, the budget approval, and when Catherine shows up, we will, between items, go back to that.
Could we take this opportunity to introduce our youth counselor tonight, who is here with us tonight?
Olivia Haga, thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
I think you have.
I know it's a busy time of year for all of our high school kids. There's so much going on in this community. I really appreciate the fact that you can get here at all. Thank you very, very much for being here.
Can I make just a comment before we move on about the youth council applications? I don't know if we said this before or not, but they're not in the packet because they contain some personal information, but each of the counselors have received them and had an opportunity to look at them, so I just wanted to say that publicly in case anyone was wondering how we know about these individuals.
Very good. Moving on then, 2020 budget approval, amended ordinance, 2490, second reading. City Council consideration of amended ordinance, 2490, on second reading, and ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, providing and appropriating funds for defraying the expenses and liabilities of the City of Montrose, Colorado during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020. Yeah, so you know what? I think I will. Let's push the budget back for a few minutes, and if Catherine is ready, I know that sort of, okay, we got a thumbs up, she's ready. Catherine and Michaela will take over, please.
So if you just want to draw a question here, state your name, what grade you're in, and I'll read the question, and then just respond in the 30-second to one-minute answer.
Perfect. Okay. See what my question is. Okay, so I'm Catherine Borner. I'm a senior at Montrose High School. So the question is, in what ways has technology helped or harmed your generation? So I think it's definitely both a help and a harm. So if you misuse technology, it's harmful for the generation, so like, people are really obsessed with social media, and that causes a lot of negative feelings, but it can also do a lot of really good things, and you can share little quotes or messages. You can reach out to people. You can stay more connected. And like, in school, we use iPads, which allows us to look up a lot more things instead of just relying on like, books and stuff, so we can find out a lot more different answers.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have more? Do you have the rest of them? Okay. All right. So thank you to both of our applicants, and with that, I would recommend appointment of both to the youth city council. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to appoint Harrison Hall and Catherine Borner to the City of Montrose Youth Council for the 2019-2020 term.
I'll second it.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Welcome, both Harrison, or welcome back Harrison, and Catherine, welcome to you. Appreciate your interest in our council, and I think we'll talk about the street pickup later at the end of the meeting, so we're anxious for you guys to get started on that. So I will, Olivia, ask you about, we've got an event on Thursday at four, right? Okay, so do know we'll ask you about that at the end. Thanks. Okay, back to amended ordinance, 2490, second reading. City Council consideration of amended ordinance, 2490, on second reading, and ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, providing and appropriating funds for defraying the expenses and liabilities of the City of Montrose, Colorado during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020. Shaney Wittenberg, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. The amended ordinance before you tonight is because I actually needed to add the $670,000 to the capital improvement fund for appropriation. So the difference between what you saw last week on the 12th and this week is at $670,000.
Okay, and I think I'm going to start with public comment on this, and then I will move to council consideration, and then after a vote on the amended ordinance, we will go to the resolution. So with that, is there any comment from the audience? All righty, council?
I just really appreciate the process. I appreciate that we started this way back in the spring with a general meeting of our vision and our goals for 2020. I know department heads and staff worked on it throughout the summer. We had another retreat with council in October, and I just appreciate the effort and the time and all of the thought from my fellow counselors and from staff that has gone into this. I know that when we began talking, well, we began talking about a public safety tax, I mean, gosh, that committee was put together in January. But at one point, one of the things that was really important to me was that if we were to raise, and it's at this point, a little over $3 million in an additional tax, that the voters would be sure that that additional tax wouldn't take the place of money that we have always used to fund our public safety. And to that commitment, that we would continue to take a piece of our general fund operating, and in fact, we set it at 43, and it's currently at 44% of our budget. I think that's really important, and it stays true to the voters' intent that that additional sales tax was above and beyond, and I think that's really important, and I think we've done good work here.
I'd just like to say, I think it was a tremendous amount of effort on the staff because of the additional vote that we had to have above and beyond the budget. But I think it's also, I'd like to thank two of the people who we have visiting here this evening for the work and the effort that they did in assisting the city with that.
And those two people are David Stockton and Phoebe Benzinger? Is that where you're going? Yeah. There's not a whole lot of other people in the audience tonight, so.
I'd like to point out that we had a question last week at our Budget Open House that council only approves just what you see on this one piece of paper, which is the funding. But I want everyone to know that council has this big notebook that we've been acquiring stuff in for three months, okay? And we have the line item. I can tell you how much is being spent on staples. I can tell you how much is being spent in the Parks Department. It's all here. Council does know every line item, and it looks a little abbreviated here, but we really do have it. So thank you, Shaney, for putting all this together for us.
Yeah, I just want to compliment the staff and the department heads. I think we have a very, I'm looking for the right word, a budget that takes into account all the different priorities in our city, the things that are important to our citizens, and those are many, many different things. And this budget has priorities that we worked out over many, many months, and I think we got lots of input from staff, and it was just a hard job, but one that was done very well. And so I commend everyone on the team, and thank you for recognizing all the different priorities in our community.
On October 3rd, city council and staff met and went over this budget. It's a balanced budget. Nothing was cut. Nobody lost their job. Everybody got a raise. It was a budget that would meet our needs regardless of what happened. Prior to that day, and every meeting that I attended after October 3rd, where I stood up in front of this community and said, "If two-way passes, we will not move money around in the budget." That's not what's happening here tonight. We are taking $670,000 out of this budget for public safety, and in this budget, we're putting it in cap reserve. We really don't know what we're going to spend it on. That will be determined later. I do know we do not have a loan from USDA yet. We hope that it's 3.5%. Could be higher, could be lower. We don't really, really know what the total cost of the building is going to be. We don't know what the cost of the design will be. It is my feeling that $670,000 should stay in public safety, and as it's not, I cannot vote on this. I told the people we were not going to move this money. It's being moved. It's my personal integrity, and at this point, I am concerned financially that we have all the money we need to actually build the building and hire the people. We don't really, really know that right now. And so by moving $670,000 out of public safety and into an undesignated fund balance, I just can't agree with that. So I will be voting no.
It's actually not being proposed to move it to undesignated fund. It's being proposed to move it to capital improvements, which is where it was on October 3rd, when we met and decided that if the public safety sales tax didn't pass, we were going to fund a couple things regardless. And we cut money out of those funds and moved them over to police in case the tax didn't pass, and we're putting it back where it was at the beginning of that day. I don't, I think it's disingenuous to say we're moving money around.
Well, I just totally disagree with you. And I was the one that got up in front of the community and told the community we would not do this.
And we specifically talked about how if we were to raise an additional $3 million with public safety, that money would not displace the money that we currently fund the police with, and we're absolutely funding the police at the same levels as before with the, and the additional tax money.
Yeah, I'd like to say that you can never predict the future. You don't know exactly what things are going to be down the road, but we have excellent professionals who can make very sound predictions based on their knowledge and our track record in the past. They have studied the costs associated with our planned buildings and hiring people and everything, and so I think they're very well-educated guesses and forecasts, if you want to use that term. And so I think we're going, moving forward with the best information that's available, and I personally have a lot of confidence in their ability to make those projections, and we have good preliminary designs as far as buildings go, numbers of people, and what it costs to hire them. So I think there's a lot of things that are not unknowns. They're very well-quantified, and there can be a little plus and minus error, but I don't think that it's appropriate to take and just simply bank money in case that these projections are way off, because I feel pretty confident they're not, so.
And even if they were, we have the opportunity by having that money in our capital reserve fund to spend it on any of those items, any of the construction items. The capital reserve fund, and I think it's also not necessarily fair to our staff to say we don't know what we'd spend it on, because when you last said that, they provided council a list of projects on which that money could be spent with council's approval.
This budget absolutely does what we asked for in the ballot issue. We've done exactly what we said we were going to do. We're allocating the sales tax that's collected in 2020 to the public safety budget as well as 44% of our general fund, which the ballot actually only said we would be putting in 43%. Instead, we're putting in 44. I think we have done everything we can do to be true to the ballot issue.
On that note, I'd like to make a motion that we approve adopting amended ordinance, 2490, on second reading.
I'll second it.
And that passes. Resolution 2019-26, city council consideration of resolution 2019-26, adopting the 2020 municipal budget.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2019-26 as presented.
I'll second that.
And the East Miami Waterline Replacement Contract Award. City Council consideration of the award of a construction contract to Mountain Valley Contracting in the amount of $536,438.10 for the East Miami Waterline Replacement Project. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the same as discussed at work session, no changes. This will be replacing the water line from about midway down on East Miami, between 6720 Road and the highway, would be 6800 Road. There's no 6800 Road there, but it's along the section line that would be, running a couple thousand feet down to the connection with our main feedoff of Project 7 down at Main Street, Highway 50, I believe it is, down there, right in front of the, what's the name of that museum down at the? Museum of the Mountain West, to give you a feel for the project area. So there's an existing 16-inch line there. This will be upsized to 24. It runs along the shoulder of the roadway. It's a county roadway, so we'll be having to re-patch that to their standards. A portion of the roadway will be closed to through traffic throughout this project, which would be expected to start about mid-December and last through April of next year. The contract amount, $536,000. It's just a contract. There's no oversight or surveying on this one since we designed this project in-house. We're able to do all of the surveying for it in-house also. And there's plenty of money in the budget for this line. There's between 2019 and 2020. We knew this was going to span multiple years. There's 1.1 million allocated to this, so plenty well under budget, and that leaves some for a potential kind of completion of the final tie-in and metering with Project 7, possibly for the end of 2020. So happy to answer any questions you may have. Recommend an award.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, I have one. Many, not many. Sometimes we don't always pick the lowest bidder because of other circumstances, like we don't, perhaps, they don't have the quality of service or some professional reasons. In this case, you have stated that we've had experience with these people before. We know that they can do this job without question, and so we're confident that their low bid is going to work, right?
Yeah, and that's a great question. So a lot of projects, especially the higher-risk ones, we do a combination of qualifications and price. This project's straightforward enough that we establish minimum qualifications and then ask for kind of a proven track record. So in this case, we have no reservations at all. We've got a really good track record with this contractor, done over, I think, easily $5 million with them, maybe even $10,000 in the last, I don't know if I put that number on here, but yeah, a lot of history with them, and it's all been positive, so no reservations about their capabilities to do this project.
Great, thank you.
Scott, is this line going to allow us to take water south, or does this give us a complete?
The main point of this line, so there's, the area where, it's an upsizing of an existing line, so we already have thorough put through this area, just not enough to keep out if you start looking out 10, 20 years down the road. So the idea is here is to stay above, ahead of kind of development and increased demand. It's kind of the highest line in the system, so it helps to fill our tanks and keep really good distribution across the head of the system, which then allows to maintain good distribution and pressures down through the balance of the system. So it's in line with the master plan, just sets us up to stay ahead of growth, so we don't have any pressure or fire flow issues in the future.
Thank you. Any more questions from council?
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry.
I can take public comment on this? Any public comment? Olivia, anything you'd like to add to this?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to award a construction contract to Mountain Valley Contracting in the amount of $536,438.10 for the East Miami Waterline Replacement Project.
I'll second that.
And that passes unanimously. And staff reports. Ms. Wittenberg, sales use and excise tax report, please.
All right. So, sales use and excise tax collection report for September 2019 compared to the same time period in 2018. Sales and use tax is currently collected at 3% in the city. September, sales and use tax compared to September of 2018, retail sales tax is at 5.4%. Construction use tax is down 26.2%, but we do see an upswing in the use and auto-use tax. This has been negative for a couple months, up by 49.6%. Total collections up 7.7% with a positive budget variance of 16.1%. Year-to-date compared to year-to-date through 2018, retail sales tax is at 5.3% or $620,000. Construction use tax is actually down 17.3% or $84,000. Use and auto-use tax is almost out of the hole at .6% down, or $6,000, and total collections up 4% or $530,000. We continue to have a positive budget variance year-to-date of 8.7% or just about $1.1 million. The Montrose Recreation District, this is a tax that the voters approved in 2014, adds .3% to our sales tax. In September, we collected $175,423, or 7.8% more than we did in September of 2018. Year-to-date, we've collected $1.3 million, up 3.6% from 2018. Excise taxes, hotel excise tax adds .9%, restaurant excise tax adds .8%. And in September, actually, our hotel excise tax is down 12.7%. Restaurant excise tax was up 3.8%, total collections down 1.2. So, sales tax was up. I'm not sure. We must have been spending retail instead of in our hotels and our restaurants. That's all I can surmise. Budget variance is positive at 10.3%, so it doesn't hurt the bottom line. Year-to-date compared to year-to-date in 2018, hotel excise tax is up 7.9% or about $7,000. Restaurant excise tax is at 5.6% or $19,000, with a total increase of 6.1% or $26,000. Positive budget variance of 9% or about $37,000. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that was dedicated to the city to promote retail sales in Montrose. And in September, we collected $33,070, or 6.4% more than we did in 2018 in September. Year-to-date, $273,000, or 4.7% more than we did year-to-date in 2018, or approximately And with that, that's all I have. I'll take any questions you all may have.
Please, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
The hotel excise tax, is that the same thing as when I go to other communities and stay in hotels and I pay lodging tax?
Correct.
So we just call it hotel excise tax instead?
Correct.
Of lodging tax?
Correct.
And ours is only 0.9%, whereas most other places I stay is at least 10%?
It's quite higher in other places, yes.
So we're an economically good place to stay in a hotel?
Correct.
Thank you.
That will be our new tourism slogan, "Stay here. Our hotel tax is low."
Stay here, play here, it's cheaper.
Shaney, can you please remind me on the vendor fee? There was some discussion at CML that the state's keeping some of their vendor fee going forward, and it just prompted a discussion amongst those of us in attendance about vendor's fees, and I couldn't off the top of my head remember what, how much it is, and then how much of it they give back.
So it was, traditionally, it's 3.33%. Back in the late 80s, early 90s, the businesses in town actually voted to let the city keep 2%. So they keep 1.33% of what they collect every month or quarter, and then the other 2% we calculate into the retail sales enhancement fund.
And that percentage is a percentage of the sales tax, and they keep that for the administration of collecting the sales tax and remitting a sales tax?
Correct.
It's a new concept to some people. They don't, it's, yeah. But anyway, the state's doing that now to fund, I believe, workforce housing across the state, which is somewhere where that additional money, the division of housing that, when they talked to us yesterday, where they're getting some of that money, is they are going to retain some of the vendor fee going in 2020. some of the vendor fee going in 2020, but only on certain businesses, and it gets complicated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on budget?
That one.
Mr. Bell?
She has her third quarter budget review.
Sorry, the budget review, it's in your packet. I never do a presentation on it. There's a memo as well, a letter, as well as the revenues and expenditures for each fund through September. Basically, with 75% of the year completed, all of our major funds are doing very well. You know, the water fund and the sewer fund are actually up in their collections as far as through September goes. I think that's attributable to a drier summer. And then, other than that, there's nothing that gives us alarm or causes us to be concerned. So it's just information for you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wait, I have a question. So trash and recycling is combined into a single collection fund and expenses and all that? It's a single fund?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Chaney, am I correct that, starting in 2020, this quarterly budget review, that's obviously done quarterly, will include the new Public Safety Fund?
Yes, you are correct.
So there will be, in the packet, it'll have its own page?
It'll, yep.
And you will address it?
Yep. And it'll also be on the sales and use tax report, just like I'm doing for the MRD tax. We'll report that separately.
And you're, there will be transfers from the general fund to the Public Safety Fund monthly?
Correct.
And then we'll see a report quarterly?
Correct.
And the sales tax that goes directly to the Public Safety Fund will come into the Public Safety Fund monthly, but about a month and a half behind when it's collected?
Correct. We'll make our first collection of the .58% in February. February 20th is the due date for that sales tax, that first collection.
And when is the first monthly transfer from the general fund? So we're transferring roughly $8 million a year from the general fund, but we're doing it monthly, so 1/12 of 8 million. When does that get transferred?
I anticipate January. I mean, we'll have collected it in February, so a little bit of a cash flow issue in that first month, but I think we'll still keep it at 12 equal installments.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can just add to that, we were asked by council to do the Public Safety Sales Tax Report Card, and so I've worked with Kaylee at the OBT, and we almost have it done. I just want to clean up the graphics a little bit, make it a little more exciting, not as boring like most of our government stuff. Kaylee does an awesome job, so she's making it look really good. So the idea is to have PSST 2A report card, and that will be part of that quarterly presentation, but also on the website, and it'd be a standalone piece that anybody could come in and get it printed out. We could turn it into a card if we wanted to. But the idea is to have promises made, promises delivered, and have a checklist. And down the left column would be three patrol officers, community operations sergeant, two school resource officers, two traffic unit park safety officers, three street crimes officers, three detectives, crime analyst, two civilian report techs, public safety attorney, and two records techs. And then under that, facility, site demo, site prep, building design, and construction. And then on the right of that would be another column with a spot for a check to go in in each one of those categories. As we do it, we'll check it off. And that should be a nice, clean way to give a snapshot on our progress, in addition to the details that would be in the quarterly report that Chaney was just talking about.
It's kind of good. People like to see their information in a lot of different ways. Some spreadsheet information and some graphics checklist. But back to the spreadsheet real quickly, just to follow up. That fund will start, though, because there's a fund balance in current Public Safety, that fund will actually start with $472,120.
I anticipate by the end of 2020, we won't have spent all of the transfer nor the sales tax, so it will go into 2021 with approximately $472,000.
Oh, that's what it goes into, 2021?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. You're welcome.
And that's at a minimum, so that's budgeted that way.
Right, that's the budgeted, right.
And then the expense budget assumes we can hire all the people we want to hire and spend the $900,000, which is on the detailed worksheet listed as debt service. We shouldn't have debt service for the entire year, and so that, we expect that to be much higher than that amount, but we don't know how many people we're going to be able to hire.
So kind of to that point, excuse me, how long does it typically take to hire a police officer? I mean, you just can't go interview people and bring them on Monday, and there they are. What's the typical timeframe to bring a person onboard as an officer?
So we have people better than me to answer that. Maybe Matt Smith, Commander Smith would want to?
Sure. So it just depends.
Matt, would you mind coming to the mic so that the TV cameras can pick you up, please?
Thanks.
State my name or?
Let's see your badge.
So it just depends if that person we select is a post-certified applicant, meaning they already have a Colorado post certification, or if they don't. If they don't, they have to at least go through an academy, which is 16 weeks. So that's in addition to the hiring process. Our hiring process can take for both of those types of people anywhere from three to five months, dependent upon their location, our resource availability, and how long their background investigation takes. Excuse me. The academy for non-post-certified people, so they can achieve that post certification, is a 16-week academy. At the conclusion of that academy, they then have to go through a 16-week police training officer program as well before they can be a functional, single officer on the street. So I don't know if that answers your question adequately or not, so.
Thank you very much, yeah.
And when you say post-certification, post stands for?
Peace Officer Standards and Training. Sorry, I should have specified that, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's just a specific thing. Sometimes I just, it's not just any kind of like postgraduate degree. It's a specific post-certification is a very specific thing.
Absolutely, yeah. Every peace officer in the state of Colorado has to have that certification so they can, they can do this work.
So will you be conducting a recruiting program, going to, I don't know if they have trade shows or whatever, conferences or something?
Actually, that's a great question. Starting in the beginning of this year, 2019, we started a very aggressive recruitment program, and we developed some pretty interesting strategies where we went to colleges, we went to job fairs, we went to other academies. The Office of Business and Tourism was instrumental in helping us develop some ideas to attract people not just to this work, but to our community as well. And it's our belief that we're not just hiring police officers because they can do the work. We truly believe that to build a successful team to serve all of you and our constituents, that they have to integrate themselves into our community. So really, we look for fit just as much as we do for qualifications. And part of the benefit of me being on the recruitment board, and also our hiring process, and also our polygraph examinations and our interview processes, is that I get a good feel for what our fit looks like, what you people deserve to have as service, because that's really what it boils down to. If it doesn't work for you guys, it doesn't work for us. So a lot of times, we do exclude people that may be qualified because we do want that fit. So this year, what we've done is we've recognized that we need to push the gas pedal a little bit more with the passage of 2A, so we appreciate everyone's support in that. But it does present a unique challenge in that we have to step up our recruitment efforts. So even before November 5th, we were planning for that. We're developing some information sheets for academies that are currently going right now. There are 13 of them in the state of Colorado. So we're passing out information for those people who potentially will be post-certified December 2nd to the 14th, and that will save us money to get those people onboard a little bit more quickly. Of course, the hiring process still takes time, and the training process still takes time, but that's a unique opportunity for us, and I think we're kind of leading the pack as far as recruitment efforts there. Also, we have a recruitment team made up of officers within our department who are going to still visit those job fairs, those academies, and things like that, and the Fort Carson Army Base as well.
Fantastic.
And that'll be ongoing starting in January. So yeah, our recruitment efforts are aggressive, and they have to be.
That's great, thanks.
Is that what you want to say about Saturday, where you guys are going to have a recruiting presence?
That's right. Yeah, we just got an email that there's a job fair at the Event Center, so we're going to have two officers that split time between that, so that anybody from the community who wants to see what we're about can meet Sergeant Rumbaugh and Officer Beck, Landon Beck, if you guys are familiar with him, both great officers and good representatives of our, of our agency, and they're going to be able to be there to answer any questions that people might have.
Fantastic.
Do you know if the police department is still accepting applications to the Citizen Police Academy? Because there may be folks who think this sort of thing is fascinating, and I know that's where I had an opportunity to kind of learn. Stuff like the fact that when you guys do hire a new officer, even with all that training, they still ride around with another officer for three months? Is that?
Yeah, that is accurate. And I don't know the answer to whether we're accepting applications or not, but to speak to your second point, even officers that do have experience are required to go through that same, that same amount of training. Again, our belief is, experience is extremely valuable. Everyone has something to bring to the table, but to get them integrated into our community and our culture, it's important for them to be exposed to that. So there's always something to work on within that training, that training design.
I think people should, if they are interested in the police academy, they should go ahead and apply.
Oh, yeah.
And then if we're booked, we'll put them on the waiting list for next time.
Yeah.
So definitely apply if you're interested.
They can pick up applications at the police department, I believe?
Yeah, absolutely. And they can contact Sergeant Chris Velasquez. He's our point person for that specifically, so if they have any questions, he can definitely answer those. So I think we're going to do some really interesting things with our Citizens Police Academy coming up that will really get people engaged with our process and not so much, I hate to use the term, but death by PowerPoint, rather have something that's a little more exciting and fun for folks and still give them a good picture of what each of our agencies does, or each of our divisions does.
Do we assist those persons when they're going to the academy? Will we provide any financial assistance to a prospect?
That, I don't know. Citizens Police Academy or?
Yeah, Police Academy.
Oh, I thought you said the Citizens Police Academy. I didn't know what you meant. No, absolutely, we do. We're one of the few agencies in the state that actually sponsors people and pays for their academy tuition to go through. Once, again, we feel once they've gone through a rigorous hiring process, we've accepted the best, and we have someone that's going to be a part of our team, that it's a recruitment tool to pay for that. So we do, we do foot that bill.
Going back to the report card, will you have information on response times on the report card?
Yeah, we're adding other elements like that. Right now, that's all we have.
I'd like to see. Response time was a big issue, the amount of crimes committed, and the closures. Is that the right term?
Clearance, right.
Clearance, clearance, thank you. I knew it began with a C. But I'd like to see that in there also. And do you have any information, we had a meeting a couple months ago with some CMU folks about a police academy here in Montrose. Are we any closer? Is there anything you can talk about that?
We are still working with Colorado Mesa University, and we've made a lot of progress, and so we're hoping, it depends on getting support of our neighboring communities and some of the others here in Montrose, just to make sure that all of our agencies are able to provide training staff. That seems to be our number-one issue. We want to make sure we don't over-commit with limited staff members. So if not this next summer, definitely hopeful we can get it up and running by the following summer. So it's a work in progress.
Thank you.
Did you say that's accurate?
Yep, absolutely. Any other questions?
Thanks for coming up and answering all our questions on the fly.
Anytime.
Any other comments, questions? Do you, you've got a whole bunch of stuff for us, right?
I have a whole bunch of stuff for you. It is almost Thanksgiving, which means that the city's holiday events are also just around the corner, so I'm happy to talk a little bit about the events that are coming up. We'd love to see community members join us. At first, the annual tree lighting, which is the day after Thanksgiving, which is next week, it's November 29th. And similar to previous years, we'll be hosting the tree lighting at the Montrose County Courthouse. Starts at 5:30 PM, and it will be very festive. I hear that Santa will be making an appearance there, so everyone should come and check that out. Also, Santa's Cabin opens just after the tree lighting, so that's the first time that Santa's Cabin will be open this winter. Also, next week, the Visitor Center relocates to a pop-up shop on Main Street. So starting on Monday, the Visitor Center will be there, so that's something else that happens next week just before the Thanksgiving holiday. And I say that because we want you to attend the Small Business Saturday Celebration, which is next Saturday, November 30th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So Montrose bucks will be sold out of that pop-up shop on Main Street, and Main Street will be closed, and there will be a lot of really fun activities taking place on Main Street. There will be professional ice sculpting, free carriage rides, kids crafts, and professional live music on the corners, like buskers will be on the corners. So it's a really fun thing. We're trying this year to encourage people to come out and use our beautiful Main Street. Then, you can purchase on that day Montrose bucks, and a quick rundown of how that works. Montrose bucks can be used here in Montrose locally. Most businesses accept them, and the benefit of buying Montrose bucks this year, this time of year, is if you buy $100 of Montrose bucks, you actually get $120. So you give the Visitor Center $100, and you get $120 back in Montrose bucks. And the maximum is $200. So you can purchase those $200 of Montrose bucks and get $240 back to spend here in our Montrose community. Those are available while supply is last, and you take, they're cash-only, so bring cash when you purchase your Montrose bucks. Then next fun event is the Parade of Lights. That's coming up on December 7th at 5:30 PM, and we're expecting lots of participation again this year. We're hoping that there's no snow that morning, just because our public work staff last year got to clear snow and then come help us with the parade, but made for a chilly but fun night, so we're hoping for some warm weather just for that night so that everyone can come out and enjoy that Parade of Lights. Also, the Garden of Lights is happening this season. That starts on December 14th, so another fun thing out at the Botanic Gardens. And Santa's Cabin will be occurring throughout that time as well there in the Uncompagre Event Plaza. And we're excited because our youth council this year will be joining us at a lot of these events. So you'll see them at the tree lighting, and we're hoping that you'll see them at the parade, too. So thanks to our youth council members for helping us make this an exciting time of year.
Anything else from staff?
If I can comment?
It's your turn, Olivia.
As a youth council, we are actually looking to possibly have a float in the parade, so we will see as far as that goes, if we can get that together this year.
And your cleanup coming up this Thursday?
Yes, of course. So thank you for having me tonight, council. As part of our responsibility as a youth council, we've adopted a road, so we are responsible for two cleanups a year at least to make sure that road is clean. And as a council, we've decided that our first cleanup date will be next Thursday, or, excuse me, this Thursday, the 21st, from four to five after school. We are looking to have our entire council there, as well as hopefully some of, some high school members who are looking to get some community service done. So we have put posters up around the school, and I'm actually not sure if we have gotten any response. Perfect, we've gotten one, so we'll have a little bit more help there. Oh, it's the road right along Centennial Middle School. So I believe that's Fifth, possibly? Okay, San Juan.
I'd like to also comment that when you talk about community service hours, that's not because they're in trouble and they were sentenced to community service.
Yes, no.
Montrose High School has a graduation requirement where each student has to have so many hours of volunteer community service, which I think is fantastic. It gives our students an opportunity to get out into the community and do other things maybe differently than they would have if they just stayed at home.
Yes, I agree with that. So it's 15 hours, and a lot, this is the time of year where a lot of seniors are starting to really think about what can they do to get those 15 hours done?
Because those are due soon, aren't they?
Actually, I, there's, it's soon. I'm not sure if it's at the end of the semester, but it's definitely by graduation, otherwise you won't be graduating.
It might be the end of the semester.
Oh, really? Wow, so it's definitely, it's getting right down to it.
Not that I have a son who's a senior who needs to finish up.
Not that I have a son who's a senior who needs to finish them, or anything.
One quick correction, I think I may have misspoke about the Visitor Center opening on Monday, I think the plan might be on Wednesday now, so moving things over on Monday, you'll see a lot of activity happening at the Visitor Center and moving it into the new location on Main Street, but the goal is to open on Wednesday, so sorry about that error.
Anybody else from council?
Football, Saturday, Montrose High School at noon, in quarterfinals for the state championship. So, come join us, and I can remember the years where we had to go over first with snow shovels and shovel off the snow off the bleachers, I kind of hope that doesn't happen this year.
I hope not. It's, they are number four ranked, and they are playing the number five ranked Pueblo West team, the winner of that game will play in the semifinals next weekend.
So, yesterday afternoon, we had a public community meeting on short-term rentals, and I just wanted to thank all the people who showed up, the room was packed, we got lots of interesting and valuable information about citizens' opinions, all different sorts of information, I'm sure we haven't digested it all yet, but it was really fantastic that so many people came out and helped us with a very important topic that we'll be discussing later on, and I want to commend Ann for running a really amazing meeting. So, thanks to all of those people who came, and anyone else who missed it, who has information that they'd like to share with the city or city council, can just email us or give us a phone call, whatever's convenient for you, so, thanks.
I think I was going to talk about football, and I kind of got to get a little bit in there anyway.
I was wondering who was going to get that first.
I know, but I got, I finished it, so, you know.
It's teamwork, very good, ladies, thanks. And with that, I would wish everybody?
I'm sorry, no. Let me say the volleyball, though, because, because I was, I was in Denver last week to attend a Colorado Municipal League meeting on Friday, and so, since I was there Thursday night, I went up to the Denver Coliseum where I got to watch our high school girls volleyball team compete, and they had an amazing win Friday night. Unfortunately, they, they did not continue on after their game Saturday, but they played really well, and I'd like to congratulate them on a, on a great season. Thank you.
And with that, I would wish everybody a wonderful, wonderful Thanksgiving week coming up next week, and hope it's wonderful for everybody, and with that, I would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to a chair.
Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, we'll see you later.